Hi, good evening. I'm Gene Proce with the League of Women Voters in Houston area. Welcome to Conversations with the Candidates. This evening, we have two candidates for at-large position one of the Houston City Council, Raj Alhutra and Larry Blackman. Thank you very much for joining us. Tonight, we're going to ask you some questions so that we can learn a little bit more about you, about your position on some of the issues to help us all become better voters. And we're going to go ahead and start with the questions. Raj, we'll start with you. Tell us about yourself and why you're running for at-large position one.
Well, thank you for having me. You know, I grew up here. I'm a native Houstonian. My parents came here from India. My dad came here with $42 in his pocket. My mom came when she was 11 years old. The city of Houston really helps our family live the American dream. My dad has a small engineering business. My mom's a professor at the University of Houston downtown. And I was able to go to Rice University and then Harvard Law School. But the reality is, that's not the case for everyone. When I was a teacher in the Hiram Clark area, I had students with the exact same aspirations as I had, whose parents worked just as hard as my parents did. Those communities had the exact same dreams as mine, but who were often trapped in poverty because of issues outside the classroom. So I had students who were homeless. And so every night, I'd ask them to do pre-calculus and statistics problems, and they would be wondering where they're going to sleep that night. I had students whose house flooded and had to move in the middle of the school year when they're trying to determine what to do after high school. And I had students who, even when they got into college, didn't have access to a car and public transit simply was not there to deliver. And so I left teaching, and I actually went to intern for former council member in this seat before the current incumbent. And I saw the power of an at-large council member to enact policy change to address some of the issues I saw as a teacher. And so went to law school, came back to Houston, decided to run an educational nonprofit with my old students called Students With Ambition Go to College, connecting high school students with college mentors and college students with young professionals. And then decided to run for city council because I believe it's a pivotal time. I believe that city council, particularly the at-large positions, have an opportunity to really make fundamental policy change that can help us build a city where we have stronger drainage and flood mitigation, where we have a city where we have improved quality of life, we have improved public transit, where the city takes an active role in affordable housing, expanding educational opportunity in after-school and summer programs, which I'm sure we'll get more into. And I think most broadly, I'm running to be an advocate, to be an advocate for all Houstonians, to build one Houston where everyone has access to opportunities. And the reason I picked at-large one is I think the current incumbent is not representing all Houstonians. There have been some policy votes, whether on SB4, or the census, or HERO, where I think he's been out of step with the population. And so to me, it's about running to give voice and to advocate and to listen, and that's what we've been about. And that's why I'm running for Houston City Council, to build one Houston where we improve our flooding and drainage, where we strengthen our quality of life, and where we enhance economic opportunity.
Mr. Alhutra, thank you very much for that. Mr. Blackman?
Thank you for having me here, Gene. My name's Larry Blackman, and I'm a retired school teacher. Taught for 33 years, have the same wife, got four kids, four grandkids. I'm a third-generation native Houstonian. Went to school at Jack East High School, Lamar University, and Texas Southern University for my masters. Four years ago, I ran for Houston City Council at-large position four. They asked the same question, what was the most important thing about you running for the city of Houston? I said it was flooding. This was before Harvey. We had two people that drowned right here in the middle of the city, the third-largest city in the United States, arguably. They drowned on Telephone Road. I said flooding was the issue then, flooding is the issue now. It just so happened that during my years of working, I interned in Galveston, Texas, under the city manager at the time, and I learned a lot about how we can deal with this flooding issue. Now, the first thing that Houston has to have is a comprehensive flood plan. They have never had it. We've always left that up to Harris County Flood District. But if the city of Houston was to develop a comprehensive flood plan, first of all, they could cut through a lot of red tape as far as getting the funding that they need in order to deal with it. The second thing that they need to do is make sure that they have the proper apparatus and the proper infrastructure that's in. And those apparatus are lift stations with computerized pinpoint stations that can pinpoint where the water is saturated mostly every time. Now, Houston doesn't flood all over, all the time, but we do know the areas that's more prone to flood than others. So what I'm saying, Gene, is that that was my passion then, it's still my passion now. I'm sure we're going to get into a lot of other things, but the main reason why I'm running is because I dealt with flood mitigation in Galveston. I understand how it goes. I know how to work with the Army Corps of Engineers. I know how we can make things better, and I know how we can get neighborhoods that have been neglected to have their fair share when it comes to the flooding issue and get in that funding.
Well, thank you very much. And in fact, you know, you bring that up, and that is my first big question for you, is what, as an at-large city council member, what can we do about flooding? I know you've already mentioned some of the steps you would take.
Yeah.
But it is the elephant in the room. We had two shows last night that we canceled because of flooding. I and some of the other students at the University of Houston downtown were stuck there for several hours because of the flooding. Flooding, you know, I think Rodney Ellis just posted a few minutes ago that we've had several hundred, 1,000-year rain incidents in the past three years, in as many years. And so flooding is an issue here in Houston. And you mentioned this a little bit already, but I'm going to come back to you, and we're going to start with you.
Okay.
What can we do about this?
Okay, Gene, we do understand that we're in the city of Houston, and we are below sea level. We understand that. We understand that when it rains, we're going to have flooding. What we're talking about doing is dealing with the flooding as best we can, and we're not doing, we're not prepared, and we're not doing the best thing that we can do. Now, lift stations, what are those? These are these giant pumps that pump the water to retention ponds and detention ponds. Retention, you retain the water for a period of time. Detention is when you detain the water and then redirect it other places. You're going to have to have, I will, as the city council person, we'll have to lobby the state in order to bring about this plan because we're going to have to work with the surrounding counties in order to get this done. So it's not, Houston has to start first by having a comprehensive flood plan. The next thing that we can do is make sure that we start in the areas where we know these people. We still have people that are still out of their homes from Harvey right now. I know it's costly. I know it's going to be costly. We understand that, and it may be one reason why we haven't done it before. But we have to start somewhere. Elephant in the room, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. We can't just go out there and throw a lot of money around and have a lot of frivolous programs and come up with solutions. We have to have a plan. And if we do that, we can start with those areas that's worse. The Army Corps of Engineers can move the course of mighty rivers, and they are good, but we're going to have to imply these people. Now that I've said that, and the last, since I've been talking about this for four years, other city council people are picking up on it. People that's running for mayor are picking up on the same things that I'm saying, and that meant that I was right the whole time. And I knew I was right. But what am I going to do? I'm going to get myself on a committee, and I'm going to be that lead person to work to make sure that we lobby for not only the funds that we need to get these people back whole again, but also lobby to get the funds to make sure that the infrastructure can address the needs of the people in Houston.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alhutra, same question. What are we going to do about flooding? As an elected member at-large position one, what do you think you can do?
Yeah, you know, I think that the city of Houston has a huge role to play in this. We saw last night, another big episode yesterday, and folks were displaced. Some folks' houses flooded again, already having flooded in Harvey. You know, we've had now four, 500-year floods in the past five years. That's just simply unacceptable. And the city of Houston has a role to play in this. In particular, our role is the minute the water hits the ground until it gets to the bayous. That's the city's responsibility. Before then, we turn it over to the county and so on. I think step one is we've got to have more parks and green space to detain and retain water, as Mr. Blackman said. We've got to do that. That's essential. We cannot just have concrete everywhere, which is going to cause runoff. I think sort of within that, we have got to look at permeable concrete. It is more expensive, but we have to look at it. Perhaps we could procure it with other cities nearby so you can have sort of some economies of scale and be able to drive down the prices. That's one. Number two, we have to address illegal dumping. This is particularly a challenge in some of our lower-income communities where we have the open ditches, not only a quality of life issue, Gene, but also flood mitigation issue. Because if you are dumping in the ditches, that causes backup, gets the water into the street, and heaven forbid into people's homes. How do we address that? I think two things. One is, we could have more cameras in place, city-county and constable partnership. You know, I've spoke with Councilwoman Casta Tatum in District K. She said she only has seven cameras, Gene, for the entire district. That's just not enough. We've got to have more cameras there. City-county partnership, have the constables enforce it. Second thing is have perhaps a quarterly dump day where folks in the community can dump at a location, at a site within their community, and then building more dump sites across the city of Houston. We only have six. And then number three, we have all been paying the so-called drainage fee for the past several years. That money has been collected. We have used it historically to pay down debt, paid down almost a billion dollars of debt. We have got to start spending that money now that it's in a lockbox. We passed Proposition A in November 2018. Money can only be spent on infrastructure and drainage projects. We ought to be doing that, and we ought to be prioritizing worst first. Right now, very few people, Gene, have any idea what the formula is to determine worst first. We need to have some transparency there. We need to have an online dashboard that shows where the money is going. And then lastly, we've got to be partnering a little bit more with the county, Army Corps of Engineers, et cetera, because quite frankly, we cannot solve this alone, but we have to take a step in the right direction. You know, and I'll just close by saying today, I was at the climate strike at City Hall. A lot of young folks there. This is an issue that is also related to climate change. We can't forget that, and we have to take steps to address that, to get to net carbon neutral, net zero emissions by 2040, 2050, in order to get us on the pathway to mitigate future damage.
Thank you very much. And I'm glad you brought up some of those issues, like the camera issue, because flooding isn't the only issue that the city has to deal with. There are a lot of other issues. What do you see that are, some of those issues, what are they, and how do you propose as an out-large council member? What do you propose to do about some of the issues that you think are most important?
Yeah, you know, I think we talked about flooding. That's number one issue, for sure. Right below that, we've got traffic. We know traffic is a critical issue. In fact, 35% of Houstonians identify traffic as the number one issue. This is from the recent Houston area survey that Professor Kleinberg has been doing for several years. In fact, Texas A&amp;M just came out with a study showing that the average Houstonian spends about 73 hours a year sitting in traffic. That's about three full days. Everybody in this room and everybody watching at home knows that they would be much rather doing other things than sitting in traffic for 73 hours, Gene, per year. And so I think that's a number-two key issue. We've got to look at Metro Next project. I support that. I think it's a good step. Invest in $3.5 billion, a little bit more. Light rail to Hobby Airport, bus rapid transit to Bush, the Community Connector Bus that was piloted in Acres Home for that first and last mile. Folks can get around in the neighborhood a little bit. We're going to expand that. That's a key step we have to take. I think sort of within the traffic issue, we've got to improve the sidewalks. You know, this seems like a small issue, but if you want folks to walk and bike, which we have to do, the population of the city is going to go from 6 million in the greater Houston region to 10 million by 2040. We have to have other forms of transportation. It's not safe to walk around right now. You know, quite frankly, the sidewalk issue might be an ADA violation. Probably it's, probably a lawsuit could be there waiting to happen. We need to address it now. Folks are more able to walk and bike. You know, we've had over 2,000 bike and pedestrian deaths and serious injuries in the past five years, most recently Shepherd and 11th Street, where we had the incident where the woman and the man in the wheelchair were both killed when a car hit them. We've got to address that, bike and pedestrian safety. Glad to see the mayor has rolled out Vision Zero to eliminate those deaths, but we need the policies to back them up, whether it's eliminating right on red, things of that nature. Finally, then let me move to economic opportunity. We've got to do better on education. We know that's a critical need for the city of Houston. Obviously, the city does not run the schools, but we have a role in after-school programs. We have a role in our summer programs. We have to address environmental racism issues. You know, you're 22 times more likely to get cancer if you live over here in the East End where we're taping this show as compared to if you live near Rice University. That's just unacceptable. We have to address that. And then, of course, back to the basics. We've got to make sure our trash is getting picked up on time. We've got to address the budget, and we've got to make sure Houston's a welcoming city. Things like SB4 getting passed in Austin, got to work to repeal that. You know, making sure we're doing outreach for the census. We're the most diverse city in the country. 70% of the folks in the city of Houston are folks of color, and so we have to, you know, we have to address that as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Blackman, what do you think are the other big issues facing the city, and what would you, as a councilman at-large position one, do about them?
Traffic. We're on the same page when it comes to that. But with one exception, I don't think we need more carbon in the air. I really don't. I worked on the, for Naomi Ledet, who was the first black female on the Metro Board. And I just happened to be in her class when we were charged with getting the empirical data research in order to find out how were we going to relieve the traffic going to Bush Airport. Well, we came up with several ideas, which the city, we recommended, did none of those. The bullet train came from that. It was supposed to have been going straight to, from Houston to Dallas, and from Houston going south to San Antonio. That was supposed to relieve the traffic for both airports. That's number one. The recommendation for the rail was supposed to travel down Main Street and Almeida, which was the natural evacuation routes. And also coming across east to west was Westheimer and Richmond. So it was supposed to cross like that, and it was supposed to, the buses were supposed to have been traveling on one-way streets, going one way to meet the rail. That was the original plan. We called it the Tic-Tac Three because we had three rails instead of, you know, just two to get there. That never came into fruition, you know, so we have to get back on that. My pet peeve, and one of the things that I really want to do and really want to see and what I'm really going to push, is hanging overhead rail. It is less intrusive to the community when we start talking about the plight of I-45. You don't have to disrupt homes. All you have to do is just put that train there. And in addition to that, it's less costly, it's aesthetic, it's fast, it's efficient, and in addition to that, it's quiet and low maintenance. So if we can utilize those ideas, the same way Seattle and in Japan did, we found out that that works. And we'll get to my others. We'll get to the others, I'm sure. But I do have another one that's big in Houston, and I'm sure you're going to ask it anyway.
Well, actually, I'm going to come back to this transportation issue.
Okay.
And both of you have talked a little bit about this in addition to the other issues. But you know, so, and some of these issues, right, so the Metro Next plan is something that we're seeing. We haven't discussed yet the whole thing about 45. You mentioned a little bit, Mr. Blackman, about, you know, maybe overhead rail, and that's an idea, but you know, the 45 issue is a big issue. And although this doesn't really affect us necessarily, TechDOT says that they don't want to complete 99 all the way down into, you know, into 45 South. And you think, well, maybe that's outside of the city limit. It doesn't affect us. But then that's also an evacuate, that was also going to be an evacuation route. So that means more people will be coming in up 45, and that is another issue. So transportation, you're right. Raj is that, you know, Kleinberg survey did say transportation was a big issue. So I wanted to focus a few minutes on that. So, Mr. Blackman, we're going to start back again with you. And so could you expand on the whole transportation issue as a city as a whole?
Well, it's, it's, all of the recommendations that we made when I was there and we turned into the city, they did none of it. Absolutely nothing. We took pictures, pat on the back. You did a great job. You did real good. And we had addressed all of those things that was going to be coming up in the future. So we weren't just addressing things immediately. We were talking about those things where we wouldn't come into this problem right now. Now, as far as the I-45 is concerned, I don't think that the city ought to take up all of the, or the state, rather, the eminent domain, moving all of those people out of there, closing up schools, people losing property, and adding more carbon in the air. The issue that we are not use, what we're not talking about is the material that's being used. We need to use more water soluble material when it comes to paving, and that is not going to happen. And that, those are the type of things that add to the problem. So when we're talking about this area that, over here, which is where it's going to definitely go through, we're talking about pollution in the air, more pollution in the air. We can use, Austin, the city of Austin right now, is using a better paving materials called TerraPave, and that is more green. Houston is supposed to be going more green. We need to stick with those type of things. And I'm with the American Planting Association, and we talk about these things all of the time. So when we talk about I-45, and that's just a model, but let me say this, those residents are resilient. They are resilient, and they are fighting back. And so people think that it's a done deal, but it's not done. It's difficult, but not impossible, because those residents are fighting, and I'm fighting right there with them.
All right, thank you. Raj, what do you think about, more detail about the transportation issues?
Yeah, let me just start with the I-45 issue here, because I think this is really a critical one. This is a project that is going to displace 5,000 folks, Mr. Blackman said. It's going to go right through Clayton Homes, is going to destroy the enrollment at Bruce Elementary. It's going to bring at least two, if not three, elementary schools within 500 feet of the highway. We know it's going to make air quality worse. The research is pretty clear on that. $7 billion on this, maybe upwards even to $9 billion on this I-45 expansion. Look, we all understand, we have got to address the parts of I-45 that flood. We all get that. We saw it again yesterday. And that's a worthwhile goal, but this is not the way to do it. And, you know, I think it is definitely not a done deal. I agree with Mr. Blackman on that one. You know, we can sort of fight back on this. And this is where I want to look at Dallas. Dallas was proposed a similar project. And they sort of, TechDOT was going through it, going through it, and the residents said, hold up, wait a minute. They got the agreement of the council members to say, stop it, mayor, some of the state reps, and then TechDOT walked away, and that project was not built. We could do the same thing here in Houston. We could. And I just want to draw a comparison, Mr. Blackman and I, you know, as compared to Councilmember Knox, the incumbent. He's been there for four years. He has not stood up against I-45 expansion. Where was he at all the meetings where these were being discussed? So it's critical to stand up. Where was he engaging the community? You had to do that. That's part of the job. So I think that's, let me just start with that on I-45. Now, to the broader transit issue, we have to look at multimodal forms of transit. And as we said before, that's buses, that's light rail, that could be more biking, more walking. We've got to make it safer. It could be some scooters, maybe even. That's a big thing in Austin. We have, we could look at piloting some scooters in certain areas. We could look at perhaps in downtown and midtown, trying to have more bike lanes in certain areas, dedicated bike lanes. You know, I know on the TSU campus, they now have autonomous buses going over there. That's another idea we have to look at. So there's a lot of ways and things we can look at, and we, you know, we need to be creative on this. But I think the point that we want to make is, the answer is not just building more lanes. That is not going to get the job done. And if you doubt that, look at I-10. I-10, Gene, is now 20-something lanes wide. It's still traffic all the time. We cannot just lanes, more, 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 more lanes. We have to think about other options to address our transit issues. Because if we don't, this is going to continue to get worse and worse, not better and better.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. I'm going to shift gears a little bit here. And Mr. Alhutra, I'm going to come back to you again here. Look, Houston is a diverse city, right? One of the most diverse cities, we're also almost the third-largest city. How are you going to work as a at-large council member, representing the whole city? How are you going to work to communicate with such a diverse population and represent the various constituents in City Hall?
This is a great question. I think this is something we've been thinking about from day one of the campaign. This is why our campaign slogan and vision is "Building One Houston." We want to bring everybody together. Now, the question is, how do you do that? Well, I think one thing is, you show up at meetings. And so that's what we've been doing, showing up in every community, every civic club and super neighborhood we can. We're going to continue to do that once in office. Now, that requires a team, because every night in the city of Houston, there are five to 10 to 15 meetings you could go to, and one person can't do that. So it's about building the team and getting the team in place to do that. We have done that on the campaign with our high school and college interns, paid with our campaign fellows as well who are paid. And so we're going to do a similar thing once in office. That's number one. Number two, it's about communicating directly with the people. That's why I give out my personal cellphone number to each and every Houstonian, the same one my mom uses when she calls me, because I want to be accessible to folks. It's why our campaign has blockwalked over 18,000 homes. It's why we phone-banked over 90,000, why we texted over 200,000. We're going to keep that program up. It's why we're spending time on social media to reach some of the younger folks. We want to have town halls at colleges and high schools once in office to engage young folks. It's why we're going to make a commitment, and we have made a commitment, to have a diverse staff, because we know that that is important. Our staff has to mirror, our office has to mirror the city of Houston, because we know there are language barriers, and we want to make sure we have staff members who can address that. We know there are certain issues very sensitive in different communities. We want to have folks who are understanding of that. And then we want to work with our district council members. I think one of the challenges for at-large is, they often don't spend a lot of time in the districts, because there's a perception that it's not my problem. But to me, and I know Mr. Blackman feels the same way, you know, if there is a new senior center going up in District A, or District G, or District K, I want to be there. If there is a new library being opened in District I, or District B, or District D, I want to be there, because I want to support the district council member. Not only because that helps me stay in touch and keep my ear to the ground, but also because every constituent in Houston is my constituent. Every Houstonian has six council members. I'm one of the six. And so I think for us, it's about showing up, it's about listening, it's about getting folks engaged in our office, it's about having a robust internship program so we can have folks at all the meetings, and then it's about having folks on the staff that represent the city of Houston, because the city is diverse, and everybody has a different perspective. And we need to listen, take those into account, and that's what we've been doing on this campaign, and that's what we're going to continue to do once in office.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Blackman, it's a diverse city. How are you going to keep in contact with all those constituents?
Well, I have an advantage. The advantage that I have is being a school teacher for over 33 years. The advantage that I have is being a school teacher for over 33 years. And in teaching for over 33 years in the city of Houston, I taught in North Forests, I taught in Houston ISD and Fort Bend ISD. So I've covered the whole city as far as my ex-students is concerned. The good part about that, Gene, is that those ex-students call me back. Every ethnicity that you can name, I talk to them on a daily basis. My phone rings, I have a very understanding wife, the phone rings, and it's some of everybody. And I should hang a shingle out there, you know, and at least collect 50 cents every time we call. But, but I like it, though, and they count on me. And I count on them. And I haven't, I don't, I haven't been doing this since I've been running for office. This is something that I've been doing for a number of years. I have a nonprofit organization called Parents Against Community Crime Organization. A lot of times, what we did earlier, Raj mentioned it earlier, is dealing with professional people. We get the kids to get a telescopic view of what they can be, once they match up with them. So we would have relays, we would have golf matches, bowling, and everything that you can name to match those people up and make it personable. During that period of time, everybody was mixed up with everybody else. And so if you, if somebody was to ask me, you know, who's going to be on the staff, the only thing that they know is that it's going to be a whole lot of my ex-students. That's the only thing. And my ex-students are very widely diverse in ethnicity, age, and everything else. The other thing is that I haven't forgotten my peer group, which are the retirees. I am a pinched senior citizen, but we have our issues also. But because of those, I've been fortunate enough to bring together a happy medium. And I think I mentioned to you earlier that exposure is the key. And if you can get people exposed to these things, you can, a world of things can happen. And we're going to work on that, we're going to keep that, we're going to have diversity. All of the things that Raj was talking about, I'm just saying, yeah, yeah, yeah. Wait till 30 years from now, you'll really be good. And so, and I'm looking forward to that.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Blackman. Thank you both for answering that question. Another question for you, Mr. Blackman, we'll start back with you again. All right. So almost very similar, but different. So we talked about your constituents. So as you mentioned, there are 16 city councilmen. You're going to have to work with a bunch of other people. Each of them are, you know, they've got their own issues, they've got their own ideas about how things should be addressed. They, some of them are representing different parts of the city, some of them would be like yourself, representing the city as a whole. So how in the world are you going to work with all of those different personalities and all of those different issues to best represent what the constituents have told you is best for the city at large?
Well, let me start off by saying, you have to take a lesson from LBJ. London Baines Johnson said, "Find out what a man wants, and when you find out what he wants, help him with it." And if you help him with it, then he'll at least think about helping you when you get ready to do something. So I laid that precedent out to say that you're right. We have a lot of councilmen with a lot of different personalities there. But each one of those people went into that seat with at least one thing in mind. So what you're going to have to have, what I'm going to have to have, is my ear to the ground. I have to find out what it is that they really like, what they want. Now, on the other side of that, is that, once I go in, people recognize certain dynamics in your personality, and they will ask you to help them. They will ask you to assist them. So I'll be on the various committees, and I'll have my ear to the ground to help these people with whatever their issues are. You've got to understand, what we'll have is, our budget is not like the single-member district's budget. The single-member district budget, they have the CIP money, and it's larger. So my job is to get on the committee that, well, I'm going to get on the flooding committee, for sure. We're going to make that happen. And the transportation. So what we're going to do is work toward whatever it is that that personality is keen on. And you can kind of pick it up. I read personality is pretty good. We learned that as being schoolteachers. And you have to go in and talk to them, you have to go in and talk to them in the office. And you have to find out what their history is and what they like. And I don't, I won't have any problem working with any of those other people, and they won't have a problem working with me.
All right, Mr. Blackman, thank you very much. Mr. Salhotra, how are you going to work with so many different personalities, so many different issues?
Well, I think you start off by saying, as, you know, Mr. Blackman mentioned, you've got to find out what it is that everybody wants. What brought them to city council? Because I go in with the assumption that everybody came there because in their heart, they want to make Houston as great a city as it can be. And so everybody's got some aspect to that. For someone, it's the budget. For someone, it's trash. For someone, it's education, or flooding, or transportation, whatever it might be. We've got to understand that. Number two, you've got to show up. We've just got to show up in the district. We've got to be supportive of the district council members. When there's an initiative in their district, we go there. We show up. We advocate. We support. We, you know, if a constituent calls us with a pothole in District C, rather than just shoving it off to the District C council member, let's go work together on it. Not to step on their toes, but to work together and support. I think that's step one. I think step two is to build coalitions for issues that are important, and try to work with and design solutions for issues that are innovative, that are not going to break the budget. You know, cities' finances are, of course, you know, stretched thin. I'm sure we're going to talk about those. And so finding innovative solutions that everybody can get behind. So whether it's the city-county constable partnership for the cameras, whether it's using the libraries and community centers as after-school programs, locations, to provide tutoring through our churches and our nonprofits and our faith-based organizations, you know, whatever it is, it's coming up with creative solutions. And then number three, it's showing up at the civic clubs and the super neighborhoods. You know, if there's a council member who's at-large who never goes to Clear Lake, or never goes to Kingwood, the District E council member is not going to be so supportive. Or if they never go to Sunnyside, or they never go to Third Ward, District D council member, and so on and so on. And so part of, I think, what's important is showing up. And then I think the last thing is realizing that we're not going to agree on everything. No two council members, no two people are going to agree on everything. And so it's a matter of saying, although we may disagree on issue X, can we at least agree on this issue and work together on this issue? So we may disagree on what to do about, you know, after-school programs, fine. But we can agree that the city should build more green space to detain water. Well, great. Let's work together on building more green space to detain water, and we'll come back to the after-school program. We'll build a different coalition for that. But it's about understanding that everybody on there, and part of the beauty of being a nonpartisan race is everybody on there can find some commonalities.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Salhotra, I'm going to go back to you here. And Raj, I want to ask you, shift gears a little bit. You both have alluded to this, and so I want you to flesh out this answer a little bit. Okay, in Houston, you know, we don't have zoning. We want economic development. We have areas and pockets of communities where there isn't much opportunity, there isn't much economic development. But at the same time, we want to be careful about economic development, because we do care about our quality of life, right? We care about our neighborhoods. So if you're looking at the city as a whole in an at-large position, how can we have more economic opportunity and still preserve our Houstonian way of life, or even improve it? And how are you going to balance those two seemingly opposing positions in an at-large position?
Well, I think we have to look at what are the levers we have at the city. So step one is, we've got to look to create jobs in every community. And I think the way you do that is, you know, we offer incentives to bring companies into Houston. And we need to tie with those incentives. We say, "Great, if you want to come here and you want incentive, great, but you need to hire in the community, in the underserved communities." Or you need to hire second chance programs, or you need to hire vets, or whatever it might be. That's one. I think number two is, we've got to work on education. You know, the city has a role to play. For example, I've outlined a plan where I think that we should ask every company, Gene, that's getting a contract from the city, to say, "You must provide three to five paid, paid high school or college internships for our low-income students in the summer." I think we've got to ask every company to show up. They've got to be part of the solution, too. That's number two. I think number three is, you know, we've got to think about our housing stock. You know, we can't just have affordable housing in certain communities. We have to have mixed-income housing. That can help us have mixed income and affordable housing all across the city, not just in certain communities. Number four is, we have got to be wary of gentrification. I think that's at the core of your question, Gene, is how do we prevent that gentrification? I think the way you do it is you look at minimum lot sizes, so we can preserve the historical nature of a community. We can look at piloting programs like the Community Land Trust, they're piloting here in the Second Ward area, to prevent folks from being displaced because of rising property taxes. We can look at trying to, particularly for our seniors, refinancing assistance programs. They can take some of the equity out of their home, particularly those on a fixed income. We can look at programs that are homebuyer assistance, and it can't just be multifamily. We've got to have single-family, too. We can look at programs that, you know, in general, can uplift the incomes of folks within the community, not just folks coming in from outside. And then I think the last one is, you know, we have to support our small businesses. The city of Houston is lucky, small businesses are coming and small businesses are growing. We've got to support them. So the city has office of business opportunity. We've got to lean into that. We've got to use our community centers as locations where there's a one-stop shop, where a small business owner can come in and get help with permitting, can get help with perhaps applying for a loan from the SBA. Perhaps the city creates a fund to have loan assistance, so the companies can have some startup capital. Perhaps we can have a mentorship program where some seasoned business professionals can connect with some of those young startups, all while ensuring that the voices of the community members are at the table. And I think that gets the last point of advocacy, and making sure that we are listening to the community members, what they want, what they believe is important for their community, because it's not going to be top-down, it's going to be bottom-up. And so I like the complete communities idea, but I think we need to do more to actually implement it, more to give it funding and support to get it going.
All right. Thank you. Larry, what would you see?
Well, if we think about the complete communities program, and our tax increment, reinvestment zones, our opportunity zones, we have a vehicle in order to make sure that we can make Houston economically viable. It can happen. Of course, leadership is a key. You have to make sure that you have the right person running that. Now, when we address building and our codes, we know that density has caused the problem. We need to, we need to look back at our building codes, and we need to hold our contractors' feet to the fire in making sure that they do what they're supposed to do in regards to building. We don't want them to get ignored. Those building codes are there for a reason. And the city can suffer from them not adhering to those building codes. So we have to make sure we do that. We have to hold the contractors' feet to the fire. We have to make sure we take advantage of the economic opportunity zones in the area. We need to do that. We need to, and that can happen. We can encourage and increase our public-private venture partnerships in that regard. I serve on three boards with the city right now. The industrial board, the health facilities boards, and the higher education boards. And RICE benefits from those series, those bond series that we issue out. So we've done over a half a billion dollars' worth of approval in order for RICE to continue, Texas Southern to continue in construction, and Yes Prep, KIPP Academy, those areas like that. And then what we really need, which I really want to push, it's going to be hard doing everything else, but we still need medical areas. We still need medical corridors in underserved areas. We need to have that. And these are people that live too far away from the medical center and too far away from any of the major memorials. And if we have those medical corridors in there, we can address the medical issues for the people. In addition to that, you can encourage professional service contracts in dealing with, in medical supplies.
Thank you very much. Let me ask you another question, and this is not something we prepared for, but, so I'm only going to give you two minutes to answer this question here.
Okay.
Kind of give you guys a break on that one. So the census is coming up. You were talking about underserved, you both talked about underserved areas. So Larry, we're going to start over here with you. Look, the census is a big issue. It affects the city, it affects how much funding we get. I mean, we all pay taxes, we complain about paying taxes, but we want to get some of that money back, and census does affect that. How can Houston, how is the census going to affect Houston?
Well, we have to be accurate on our census. That's the first thing. We are not accurate at all. If you, I used to work that, too. If you knock on doors, or, well, you knock on doors, you make phone calls, you make contact through the mail, and those are the three main areas that you make contact with people. So you need to get an accurate report. Some people are just going through, and they're not doing the, they're not doing the best job, put it like that. But one of the areas that we forget are those people that's homeless. Now, in the homeless area, you have to understand this, Gene, and this is another pet peeve of mine outside of flooding. I'm sorry, I might go, I might do two and a half minutes. But you have to understand this. You got 36% of the homeless people are black. 34% are brown. 72% are veterans. 100% of them, yes, veterans, and that's the reason why I'm bringing this up. And 100% of them need counseling. Okay. With that being said, you're not even counting these people. They are not invisible. They are not people that you throw away people. These people count. So that's another area that we need an accurate count. Where can we put them? We'll get to that after my 30 seconds. I can come back to it, because I do have a solution for the homeless.
Okay. Raj?
Yes, this is a critical issue for the city of Houston, because everybody deserves to be counted, period, full stop. That's not only the morally right thing to do, but it's also economically the right thing to do, because every person, homeless individuals, those who are undocumented, those who are low-income, those who may not speak English as a first language, every individual who is not counted results in $1,500 less in federal aid coming to the city of Houston. So even if you don't believe the moral argument, which you should, there's a business argument here, is economic, there's a budgetary argument. And so I think this is an opportunity where, I know he's not here to defend himself, but there's a fundamental difference between Council Member Knox, the incumbent, and us, because he opposed any census outreach when the city voted on it. He opposed it, because he, quote, "was worried people might get registered to vote." That was the opposition. The goal of the census is to count folks and to make sure we get counted. I think to get to a broader point, that Houston has got to be a welcoming city, where everybody feels like they're a part of this journey, and a part of this city, a part of this process, a part of this incredible experiment that we're trying to show here, that in a multiracial, multi-ethnic, multi-religious city, which is- which is going to be what this country looks like, that we can make it work. And when we have leaders who don't believe people should be counted, or don't believe we should invest money in that, or don't believe that everybody matters, that's a problem. But to me, the census is just another opportunity for us to show to everyone, particularly folks of color, that you matter, that your story's important, that you deserve to be counted because it is morally right and it is economically right.
Can I?
Sure.
Okay, and you said almost the rest of what I was going to say. I gave you those stats for the reason that these people, these veterans are eligible for housing. A lot of them are. And you have companies, for-profit companies, that can get back at least 5% back on their return if they make these modular homes. And it's only two things that you have, must have. That's a full bathroom and a full kitchen, something for them to eat, and you have to go to the restroom. And so they make these modular homes, and it's sectional. And as people, as they go to the counselors and talk to the counselors and get these people back on track, back whole again, then you relieve, you take that module out if you need it. So it can change the size. You may have 100, at one time you may have 75. And hopefully, we can get it down to 45, you know, under 50. And all they need is a space out there. I'm saying that to say, once they get in a home, that counts. That census counts right there at that home. As long as they're out there on the streets, you can't count them. But you can count them if they are inside the home.
So we're going to wrap things up here. I
Thank you for
I want to say that you guys are, both presented a good show tonight, a good insight into where you stand on politics. But I don't know which one I would vote for. So if I am talking to the voter now, right? Why are you the best candidate for the job? And tell us more about, where can I go to find out more about your campaign? Raj, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Gene. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. Let me start by saying, if you want to learn more, you can visit our website, Or just call me directly, 713-320-0303. That's actually my personal cell number. Please give me a call, text, whatever. You know, I think that we have some awesome candidates in this race. And the reason I think I'm qualified for this job, the reason I am running, the reason I hope to earn your support, is three, three things. One, I am going to work my butt off. And we have tried to do that on this campaign. Whether it's showing up at meetings, whether it's block walking, whether it's getting out and talking to voters, we have done everything in my power to work as hard as I possibly can, and that's what we're going to do once we're on council. Number two is we've tried to be an advocate. That means listening, that means sharing my personal cell number, that means going to whatever means possible to connect with you, if it's at your door, if it's on the phone, if it's on a text, if it's on social media, whatever. And number three is we want to be solutions-oriented. You know, from day one, I've outlined specific policies on my website. Have how we're going to address flooding, how we're going to address homelessness, how we're going to address education, how we're going to address traffic, how we're going to address environmental racism. It goes on and on and on. Because to me, this job is about solutions. And I'll come back by closing with the following. Houston is the most diverse city in this country. And as Professor Kleinberg is writing his recent book, Houston, a prophetic city. We are what this country is going to be. And we have two pathways we can go on. Pathway one is a zero-sum mentality, us against them. Pathway two is a broader, we're all in this together. I'm running because I believe Houston needs to go on pathway two where we are a beacon of hope for this entire country, where we show what is possible in Houston and what is possible for this country, where everyone has opportunity. That's why I'm running, and that's the vision that I've laid out.
Raj Salhotra, thank you very much. Larry Blackman?
Thank you for having me, Gene. Let me say this, I do agree that we have some great candidates in this race. The only difference is that, including the incumbent, I have more experience than everybody else in the race. I've dealt with the flooding issue firsthand. I've, I am a retired person. I understand what a pension is. I understand what family values are. I understand having to raise kids. I understand having to get them in school. I understand all of those things. I didn't just start running. I've run for city council before. I ran in the other race with the late Larry Green to unexpired term. And I'm abreast of all of the issues in the city of Houston. So if there's a difference between me and the rest of the candidates, it's simply one that I have more experience. I'm the only one that have worked with four different mayors in the city of Houston, serving on the city boards. And so when you go through leadership, four different leaderships like that, when you continue to work on the bond as far as HISD in order to get new schools in, in our underserved neighborhoods, and get things back on track in our neighborhoods, you know, I don't know what they mean by "make America great again." But I do understand making Third Ward great again. I do understand making Fifth Ward great again. I do understand making Sunnyside great again. And what I'd like to do is make sure that I'm that advocate on there with the experience that I have in order to make sure that the city of Houston is the best city in the United States.
Thank you very much, Larry Blackman, Raj Salhotra. Thank you for coming up and informing us about your race for at-large position one on Houston City Council. I want to thank you for coming out, braving the rain, answering our questions here at Houston Media Source. Every year, the League of Women Voters of the Houston area publishes its voting guide. The voter's guide is where we ask candidates for various races, including HISD board, HCC trustee, at-large, and regular city council, and also the special election 148. We're asking them questions about their positions. We're printing this up. You can get it at newsstands, you can find it all over town. And you can go to our website, lvwhouston.org, and also get a copy of it from there. And you can get our 411 app and find out more information about the candidates from that app as well. It's going to be available in English, Spanish, Vietnamese, or Chinese. If you go to our website, you can find our handy-dandy voter's guide. It's to help answer questions about new ways of voting and whether or not people who are homeless can vote. That's one of the questions we address. So go there, you can find out more information about each of the candidates as well and about how to go about voting. There have been changes this year. In just a few days, Houston Media Source TV will post this program on its YouTube channel, and then we will post it on LWV Houston, our Facebook page. Thank you very much. I'm Gene Prost for the League of Women Voters of the Houston area. Thank you for coming out to conversations with the candidates.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.